Good morning, everyone. We'll call the June 4th, 2013 meeting of Jackson City Council at order. Call Councilman Randy Wallace to lead us in our invocation and pledge. If you would, please rise.
You bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the gift of leadership you have given to members of this city council. Help us to recognize the wisdom in others and not rely solely on our own opinions. We ask that you guide us so that the decision we make will be pleasing to you and make Jackson a better place to live. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Neil, you can show all council members present. And item four is approval of the minutes of the May 7th, 2013 city council meeting and May 21st, 2013 call city council meeting. And council members have a copy of those minutes. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, we'll just declare those as they were submitted. Item five is the invitation for public comment. Anyone present who wants to comment on any item under new business, if you'd be kind enough to let me know, we'll be sure and call on you and let you come up and speak. Let me just, before we have the proclamations, recognize troop number six, Boy Scouts from St. Mary's, Scout Master Tom Carson Jones. Would you guys please stand and let us recognize you? And good to have you here. And we do have two proclamations this morning, and I'll ask the members of the Blue Thunder if they would come up and join me over at the podium. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a proclamation this morning recognizing the Northside High School Junior ROTC Blue Thunder Drill Team. And we have Colonel Chris Pope. Colonel, you want to come up and join them? If you would. Thank you. Chief Master Sergeant Wayne Barron is here, and also Cadet Colonel Jacob Harris, Cadet Colonel Austin Hurt. And I think we may be missing two of our drill team, and I'll let one of these either sergeant or colonel give you those names as they come up and address the audience. It's a proclamation. Whereas the Northside High School Air Force Junior ROTC Blue Thunder has won many regional drill teams championships and for the first time this year competed at the national level where it represented Jackson, Tennessee. Whereas the members of the Northside Air Force Junior ROTC Drill Team spent countless hours practicing six days a week over a three-month period in preparation for the competition at Daytona Beach, Florida. And whereas Casey McConnell, Austin Hurt, Frank Perry, and the team commander Jacob Harris coached by Chief Master Sergeant Wayne Barron defeated thirty-six teams from across the United States, including the reigning champions who had won this event for the past seven years in the Open Color Guard Division of the 2013 National High School Drill Team Championship to become the 2013 national champions. Now therefore, I gerry gifts Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June the 4th, 2013, as Northside High School Air Force Junior ROTC Blue Thunder Drill Team Day and urge all citizens to recognize their accomplishment. If one of you guys come up here, Sergeant, you want to come up? And you guys? Congratulations to you. I know you're all wonderful ambassadors for a city, and congratulations to you. And if you guys want to come up and address the audience?
Just real quick, I'm Chief Master Sergeant Wayne Barron, and this is half our drill team. Summer's already hit. One young man's joining the Air Force and fixing ship out, and another young man's already working. So Mayor, thank you so much for recognizing today as Northside a Blue Thunder Day, and members of the city council, thank you as well. It's quite an honor to take four young people from Jackson, Tennessee into the great unknown. We didn't exactly know what we were getting into. Going to Daytona Beach, Florida was a big step for us. In the last couple of weeks, I have been asked over and over, what is junior ROTC? Well, the Air Force has an official answer. It is, we build citizens of character. But I want to give you a visual. This is junior ROTC. They're not my children. Their parents entrusted me with their lives, and I look at them like children because to me, they're mine. But in order to kind of drive this home, I'm going to have Cadet Harris just make a few words, and then Cadet Hurt as well make a few words, so you get an idea of what junior ROTC is about.
I would like to thank Mayor, Mayor Gist. I would like to thank the city council, and I would like to thank the, the audience, please, for being here on this joyous day. On May 4th, we left with no intentions of, we left with intentions of winning. We left with a mindset that we wanted to do this. We understood that if we had no intentions of winning, we were never going. We understood that we would be going against many cadets in what we were doing, especially in the area we were participating in. On May 4th, about nine o'clock in the morning, we stepped on the floor, nervous as all get out. We were to our wit's end nervous, with four judges from each branch of the military, all high-ranking, and many good groups there, many good groups. But we still had our heads high because we left Jackson, Tennessee with everybody supporting us at the time. As I remember that day, Mr. Catlett came up to me, our school principal, and he said, "We support you all the way. You will do a great job. Come back with a smile on your face and your head held high." And that is what we really needed to hear from Mr. Catlett. That day, we participated, and we looked at each other, and we all established a bond between each other over the years. And we all said a little prayer, because you know, you can't do nothing without giving honor to God. You can't, you can't begin to leave without giving honor to God. Now, Chief, he prepared us for this competition. Sometimes we had practice six days a week, sometimes five, around four to five hours. Colonel installed our military bearing, public speaking, and we went down and we saw a lot. We saw self-discipline. We saw academic areas in ROTC, things that we have never dreamed of, that we have dreamed that only of doing. And stepping into that arena, we were like, wow, we are here. We traveled, we trained for two months dreaming that we were stepping in that arena with everything, and it's nice to know we left with everything. Mr. Hurt?
Well, after that, there might not be much to say. I'd just like to say, thank you, Mayor Gist, and city council, thank you. In my opinion, that was one of the greatest moments of my life that I'll ever be able to tell my children or tell other people about. It was, it was the best thing in my life at this time, and it was just a great experience to be able to be a small, little school here in Jackson, Tennessee, to go compete at the highest level possible for ROTC drill team. I'd like to say thank you again, and God bless.
Guys, you all represent us well, and I'm sure you're great, again, ambassadors. See, we have Tammy that's going to present you all with a, just a small token of our appreciation to you, and that is a lapel pin, which you cannot wear on your uniform, but you can wear it on your casual coat. It contains the official seal of the City of Jackson, Tennessee. So again, we congratulate you all, and thank you so much for representing your city. Give him a big hand. Okay, let me ask Hank Chakford and his guests, if they would, to come forward. We're getting ready to proclaim the Albert A. Stone Junior Cup Day here in Jackson. Y'all come up and just gather around. Y'all want to come? Where they can see you. Mavis, come on over here. She can't see you back behind me. Good to have you all. Good to have you all with us. This is a proclamation. Whereas William Barnes, Bill Johnson, was a distinguished citizen of Madison County, Tennessee, and his golfing community for many years until his untimely death on November the 3rd, 2012. And whereas Bill was born in Memphis, Tennessee, on May 23rd, 1959, to Bob and Mavis Johnson, who removed to Jackson shortly thereafter. Bill and his brother Larry and sister Laura were raised in their home along Fair Oaks Place in North Jackson. He attended Andrew Jackson Elementary School and Parkway Junior High School and graduated from Jackson Central Mary High School in 1977. And whereas Bill learned to love and play the great game of golf with his father, later Bill worked as a lifeguard and as assistant to the greenskeeper at Woodland Hills Country Club. He was an avid hunter and fisherman. He attended Bethel College on a golf scholarship, playing all four years, and graduated in 1983. Bill met and married his wife Beth Parker Johnson in 1983. They have one daughter, Amber Elizabeth Johnson. And whereas in 1987, Bill was hired as a special order manager for Wilson Sporting Goods in Humboldt and was eventually promoted to national sales manager for the golf division in that capacity. Bill coordinated ball and equipment sales for special markets. Bill was actively involved in sponsoring local golf events such as the Jackson-Wilson Classic and the FCA Golf Tournament, to name a few, providing golf balls and equipment for the charitable purposes. Bill and Wilson Sporting Goods were always there to provide a helping hand. And whereas Bill loved to compete, and he played in many local and statewide tournaments while maintaining his membership at the Jackson National Golf Club. While not playing golf, he was hunting and fishing with his friends. He and Beth attended Great Grace Methodist Church. And whereas, in recognition of his life and dedication to the furtherance of the great game of golf here in Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and as part of the 2013 Stone Cup, the official golf championship for Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, let it be known that the honoree for 2013 Stone Cup is Bill Johnson. Now therefore, we gerry gifts Mayor of the City of Jackson, Tennessee, and Jimmy Harris, Mayor of Madison County, Tennessee, do hereby proclaim Tuesday, June the 4th, 2013, as Albert A. Stone Junior Cup Day, as the official golf championship of Jackson, Madison County, Tennessee, and urge all citizens to participate in this annual golf championship and express appreciation to Bill Johnson and his family for their contributions to golf as this community has stated herein. Hank, it's an honor for me to present this to you and let you introduce the guests.
Bill was my friend. His death was untimely. While he was on this earth, he always reached out to help other people. I am honored to have had him as a client. I'm honored to know his mother, Mavis, and his, and his wife, Beth, and his daughter, Amber. And we're most appreciative of the mayor and city council joining us in honoring Bill's life. And in recognition of that life, I want to present this to Beth. And Beth, if you want to say a few words, you can. Mavis, you want to say anything? Amber, you probably don't want to say anything. Well, thank you very much. Y'all?
Just a quick word about, just a quick word about the Stone Cup. This is our eighth year. Got the Stone Cup there. We're gonna, over, over two weekends, three golf courses, and potentially 108 holes of golf, we're gonna determine the champion golfer of West Tennessee, of Jackson and Madison County. It'll be on the 22nd and 23rd of June. First day, it will be at our friends at Woodland Hills, and the second day of qualifying will be at Jackson National. And in the top sixteen, we'll then come to the Jackson Country Club two weekends later to participate in match play. Last year was our first year with sixteen players in match play, and it was, it was a great, it was a great tournament. Our winner from last year was Cody Alexander. And Mr. Mayor, just two changes with the Stone Cup. First of all, we are now a division of the West Tennessee Healthcare Foundation, and we're very proud of that. It allows us to do some things with the Stone Cup that we couldn't otherwise do. And our friend Gary Grisham, the president of Bank of Jackson, is here. Bank of Jackson has very generously agreed to sponsor the Stone Cup for the next three years, and his contribution will allow us to provide some, some mementos for the players. So we're looking forward to having a, a great tournament this year. I want to, I want to introduce a good friend of mine, Jimmy Dar from the Tennessee Golf Foundation. I'm privileged to serve as the director of the Tennessee Golf Association, and the Tennessee Golf Foundation is, is a brother-sister relationship with the Tennessee Golf Association. They do many good things for the promotion of golf, and he has a report that he'd like to present to the council.
Thank you, Hank. Good morning, again. My name is Jimmy Dar. I'm the West Region Director for the Tennessee Golf Foundation, and I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you, Mayor Gist, the city council members, for the opportunity to present what we feel is some important data today regarding the economic impact of the game of golf throughout the state of Tennessee. Last year, a study was commissioned by the Allied Associations in Tennessee Golf to determine the total economic impact of the game and its relation to other key industries in the state. The Allied Associations include the Tennessee Golf Foundation, the Tennessee Section PGA, the Tennessee Golf Association, the Club Managers Association, the Golf Course Superintendent's Association, and the Tennessee Turf Grass Association. This study shows that in 2011, the size of Tennessee's direct golf economy was over $960 million. That means that golf, as an industry in Tennessee, is larger than the state's equine industry, larger than the great Smoky Mountain tourism industry, and approximately one-third the size of the Nashville music industry. Golf brings visitors to the state of Tennessee, spurs new residential construction, generates retail sales, and creates demand for a myriad of goods and services. In 2011, Tennessee's golf industry generated a total economic impact of nearly $2 billion, supporting over 22,500 jobs with approximately $564 million of wage income. The continued health and growth of the golf industry has a direct bearing on future jobs, commerce, economic development, and tax revenues for a large number of Tennessee's communities and industries. It's very timely that I'm presenting this information to you today as the PGA Tour's FedEx St. Jude Classic prepares to begin play tomorrow down the road in Memphis. During the televised broadcast of the tournament, you'll hear numerous references to the charitable giving that is generated through the game of golf. The PGA Tour is very proud, and rightfully so, that they are approaching the $2 billion mark in total charitable contributions through their events. In 2011, the Tennessee Golf also played a major role in giving back to charities throughout the state, generating nearly $37 million of total donations through hundreds of golf fundraising activities statewide. Once again, Mayor Gist, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity, city council members, for being able to present that information today.
Thank you, Jim. And if any golf lessons go along with that, I can name a few right here in the front. Counsel will on the first item, the first reading, that petition has been withdrawn. So we'll strike that from the agenda and go to item eight, the second readings. And we have consideration of amendment to the ordinance, the City of Jackson, Title 15, Chapter 1, Section 15-122, relative to illegal parking citations. This is second reading. Counsel approved it on first read. Is there a motion?
To adopt the ordinance, second.
Have a motion, the second? Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two, under second reading, it's consideration of ordinance for the 2013, 2014 fiscal year operating and capital budget. Morning.
We're here to consider the, the second reading and the changes that have occurred since the first reading. I had hoped to breeze through this, but informally, Councilman Buchanan invites me. He felt like causing some trouble this morning. So I take that with a grain of salt and hope he was just adjusting.
He'll brush it.
This was the ordinance as originally presented with about a $700,000 positive variance. This is general fund. And this was the tax levy as was originally presented, again, with no change, $1.97 per hundred. And what I'd like to do now, thanks to Ms. Bell, who has meticulously kept up with all the changes, and I have tried to supply the council through emails, and I hope everyone has had a chance to receive and read and understand, but I didn't think I was going to have to send out so many changes. But let me try and summarize where we're at here. We started out, if you noticed, down at the bottom, with a $784,374, I don't want to say profit, but to the good, positive position of revenue over expense. Initially, the nineteen changes that Karen had, and I'll put up the chart here very shortly, put out on the first summary, reduced that to $666,357. From there, we had further changes that reduced it to $550,446. And this was basically involving the school resource officers where they cut back, and we had to reduce our revenue by $48,000. And I had not followed through with the police department to make sure they correctly budgeted for the patrolmen that were going to be assigned. So that cost us $67,000 in expense. So that was the big hit. The final change that I sent out just yesterday was a requirement by TBI for the use of the NCIC, or the access for all satellite agencies, which we had, we are one of, the city court is, and had not previously been charged, and that was another $2,240. So, and, and I'm open to questions, but here, basically, is what we thought was going to be a small list of changes. And let's just start up at the top, and I'll kind of summarize. The first section up there has strictly to do with the health and sanitation account. And if you remember, Kathleen Honeycutt and I said we had a $420-some-thousand positive position, but we didn't have the employee benefits in there yet. So this, basically, isn't any problem. It just brought the health and sanitation budget to a balanced position. And then we had, and stop me along the way, anywhere you want, but basically, we had some increases in police salary. We had some drug court professional services that were left out, and we come down here to the, let me make sure I'm on the right line, city court salaries that were required by the DA, increases. And then we had, basically, where you, the council, decided to go back to the old grants and donation and not accept what was presented, and that cost us $17,000 in one section and $11,000 in another. And then, of course, we had what I referenced before, the $67,000 increase in resource officers. And the offsetting, not offsetting, the additional revenue we lost accordingly, that $48,000. The big increase in capital was a $115,000 increased, let me get on the right line here, grant provision for F.E. Wright, which is offset, basically, by the $92,000 in revenue that we received. And then that left us $23,000 short, and Scott Chandler in engineering was kind enough to take that out of his resurfacing pavement capital, so we really didn't get hit hard there. To summarize, basically, and let me put up, I also did send this out, and I want to make sure that everybody is in agreement, because this did cost us $27,000 when we went back to the original grants and donations versus what had been presented. And you can see it's $11,700 and some odd dollars in the 720 account, and then appropriation to other agencies, it's $17,000. So that was $27,000. So I guess to summarize the surprise to us and to you would be what it cost us in the school resource officers when the Madison County schools decided to delete two, and we had incorrectly provided for the number of officers to begin with. Are there any questions concerning the changes that Ms. Bell has so diligently kept up with here, and we've tried to keep the council informed along the way? The bottom line is that we are now down to a $448,000 positive, I'm sorry, $548,000 positive position of revenue over expense, which is still very good to go into the year. But you can see, and I know Randy commented back to me in several emails, is when was I going to stop making the changes? But that $548,000, which a half a million seems to be a good number, but it can disappear very easily, as the mayor knows, when we run into unforeseen circumstances.
Any questions from council as to the, I guess those would have to be considered amendments to the budget from first reading?
If I could, Al, I think I'm missing something. I'm looking at the original budget where we had the 64, 143 in revenues and the 63, 359 in expenses, which left 784.
Yes.
Okay. And then if I look at your worksheet and subtract the 185 in additional expenses and subtract the $28,000 in lost revenues, I'm coming with 569 left in fund balance instead of 548. So I'm missing like 20,000 somewhere.
Not saying that I couldn't have made mistakes along the way. Basically, we're talking about the general fund now. We had $187,000 in increased expense.
Okay. I've got that.
If you've got a calculator up there. You've got a calculator up there. And then we had $28,000 in lost revenue. So you'd add the 187 plus the 28, and...
That's 215.
That's okay. From the 784. And if I'm, and then we had, well, it's included in here, was the last change on city court.
That brings me to 569 on the...
Okay, $20,000. Karen, help me. Did I just mess up in my calculation? Or is there a $20,000 that sticks out there somewhere?
I think it's just the calculation.
Okay, I accept responsibility for that. Then we're 20,000 better off.
Okay, do we have the final number for the amendment?
What did you come up with then, Randy? Five?
569, 048, somewhere in that.
569, 048.
That's an increase of 20,000.
Right, we're 20,000 better off.
Do I get half of that as a finder's face?
No. Dream out.
There were so many changes, Randy, it's no excuse, but I could have got lost.
Well, it looks like you may have added, restored to the agencies back in there twice, you subtracted it twice, I think. Maybe it could have been what the... But anyway.
We'll gladly...
The 569 sounds right then.
We'll gladly accept a better position. So the proposal, Mayor, I think in front of us is that we passed the first reading ordinance as was stated with a $784,374 positive variance. And we are now through these changes. And we can approve them in sections. I would suggest we just make one motion for the changes.
I think that will suffice, as long as Anita, do you have a complete copy of all those changes that, for the minutes?
You can have that one. She does now.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions from counsel as far as the proposed operating and capital budget? What we'll do when we're ready to accept a motion is accept the budget as amended in second reading. So any other questions from counsel? Any other amendments that we'd like to be considered? Go ahead, Councilman.
A quick question, if I may. Relative to the resource officers out, so we're clear, we're not adding any additional resource officers.
No, we took two off.
We took two off.
But in looking over the police budget, they had really not budgeted correctly for the number of police officers to begin with that they were going to assign to that. And I didn't catch that. So that cost us $66,000 to correct that, plus the 40-some-thousand that we lost in revenue from Madison County Schools.
Okay.
So that was a big hit.
Okay, I just want to make that clear.
I make a motion, we accept the budget as amended.
Second.
Give a motion, the second, and discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
Is for cap to also.
Yes.
Right.
Right.
The vote is unanimous.
And the second item, under the second reading, would be the tax rate, which, again, is at $1.97. There's no change. The only change, we went through this before, was that basically in the allocation of the $1.97, and we had a slight change on the split in the pie chart, where previously, the general fund was getting 80 and the debt service 20. And we have a slight change now from 79.1 to 20.9. But the tax rate itself stayed the same.
So moved, second.
A motion and a second.
I have a question on that.
Go ahead.
On that allocation that we used, does that include prior year taxes as well as interest and penalties?
Yes.
Okay, so interest and penalties is calculated in that?
Right, it's, the total number that we're talking about here is 34,802, and that's current year taxes, back taxes, penalty and interest, and payment in lieu of tax, which is basically JEA.
Okay.
I have a question, if I may.
Wait.
Going forward, will we be paying more to debt service?
Yes, the 19-point, I mean, the 15.3 million that was approved. And Councilman Wallace has brought up some questions concerning, you know, our interest payments. But you can see, we were able to delay for the first two years any payment on principle. So it's going to be the third year from now where you're going to see the hit to that pie chart. The first years will be small, especially if we don't draw down all the money. We have three years, and we're not going to draw down 15 million. We're going to draw it down in an intelligent manner as the requirements come into play.
Right.
But you're right, it will eventually. And of course, let me just go back and show you to, if I can, refresh everyone's menu as to when we were really in trouble. And that's back here in FY '08, when we had 38 percent, whoops, excuse me, going to debt service. And in that year, it cost us, bottom line, a 7, $6.9 million loss. Then we did our refunding and spread that debt out, which was a very intelligent thing to do. And then you can see from there on, we started in positive position, $600,000, 3.7 million, 1.3. And we continued on with those positive positions until, if I can find my right chart here. See, there's the .6, the 3.7, 1.3. Last year, FY '12, we had the Lambeth $2 million unanticipated contribution, and our health insurance claims went wild. And we actually had to take $700,000 out of the reserve that we had built up, or this number would have been like 3.1 million. So this year, as I related, we're hoping to come to a break even position. Right now, with three months to go, our health care looks like it's going to come in, health claims about where we predicted. And that could change overnight. Just like to bring everyone's attention to, for example, the sportsplex. And the last, talk about uncontrollable situations. The last three or four weekends, we've had three cancellations. We've lost $300,000 in revenue just on team registration. Last weekend, we had 130 teams registered from six states. And that's a snowball effect, because we lost $300 in team registration. But you can imagine what hotels and the restaurants lost, because that was four or 5,000 people. So there are things that are uncontrollable. And that's why we can't always say we've got 500,000 to the good.
Okay, we have a motion, the second. Any additional questions, Al, on setting the property tax rate? Not counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Okay, thank you, Al.
Okay.
Item nine, under new business, is consideration of the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation contract, the City of Jackson, for mowing and litter, maintenance of state highways through municipalities. Karen, do you have anything new on that particular contract? Up or down, same amount?
Move the acceptance, second.
Have a motion for approval, have a second discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item two, is consideration of the State of Tennessee Department of Transportation contract, City of Jackson, for maintenance of state highways through municipalities.
Move for approval, second.
Discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item three, under new business, consideration of a contract for a professional consulting engineering firm to provide services related to the construction of widening project along Dr. F.E. Wright Drive. White?
Twelve proposals were received for this project, and we had a five-member selection committee go over all these proposals. The successful firm will provide engineering design, right-of-way, construction engineering, and inspection for this project. And we would like to make the recommendation of TLM with Neil Schaefer, in association with Neil Schaefer. And we have Keith Donaldson and Keith Chandler here, and they can answer any questions that you might have about this project.
We'll make a motion for approval.
Do we have a motion for approval of the contract? Properly seconded, any discussion from counsel?
Who's on the selection committee?
It was Scott, Keith, Stan, May, and Josh Richardson in the Engineering Department.
Any additional questions? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item four, is consideration of contract for ready-mix concrete.
It's time to rebid concrete for the City of Jackson. We received two bids, BT Ready Mix and Southern Concrete. BT Ready Mix had the lowest prices, and we would make a recommendation to you for that award.
Move to accept the recommendation of BT concrete, ready mix.
BT Ready Mix.
We got a motion and a second discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Item five, is consideration of contract for FEMA consulting service.
The mayor's office asked me to place this contract before you today. The company that has been selected is Shaw's LLC in Ellisville, Mississippi. And their primary role is to assist the City of Jackson with emergency management consulting, FEMA consulting, debris management, FEMA reimbursement, worksheets, building inspections, and all the disaster information just rolled all into one ball, they can do it. They have a 95% success rate with FEMA and TEMA. They have got several good references. They just recently have worked with Chatham County with the Cumberland River Basin on the 2010 flood. They work with the county. They work with the City of Hattiesburg, Mississippi, Hale County, Alabama, Morango County, Alabama. And they have just started working with the federal highway reimbursements for 2011.
Ms. Chairman, Ms. White, with respect to the reimbursement section of, you say they do, what is their success rate?
95%.
95%. And what we're expecting back from the City of Jackson that we have not received, how much is there?
Is it 2-point-something, Al?
Well, it would be about 2.5 million. But Sam, what have we done to be, almost $690,000?
So this contract with them would help us get up with our reimbursements, what we've been trying to get for years?
If you choose that they go back and help us with those reimbursements, they can do that.
But, and we need to clarify that, contracting with them now is for future disaster, God forbid, but they can go back and help us with the...
They can, if you choose, they can do that. And they are willing to help us with that.
Okay, thank you. Who would make that decision, Susan?
You, as the counsel, could make that decision.
Any other questions?
How long is this contract?
It's a one-year contract with four one-year options to renew. And we'll only use it if there are disasters that strike our city.
Okay, we have a, do we have a motion already?
I thought we had a motion.
We had a motion and a second, I think. We don't, okay, so we have a motion here. Is there a second?
Second.
A second, any additional discussion from counsel? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you, Ms. White. On board appointments, item six, CRA Board is reappointment of Neil Husman.
So moved, second.
Motion, the second, discussion from counsel. Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And on the Jackson Energy Authority Board, the reappointment of Howard Bond.
So moved, second.
Any discussion from counsel? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And on the Jackson Regional Planning Commission, the reappointments of Jerry Day and Valerie Cole.
So moved, second.
Discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And the final appointment, from West Tennessee Healthcare Board, the appointment of Danny Wheeler as a replacement for Earl Anderson, who has resigned.
So moved, second.
Discussion from counsel, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
May be a good opportunity to thank Earl Anderson for his roughly 14 years of service to West Tennessee Healthcare and capacity of being a member of the Board of Trustees. He's done a great job, and we appreciate him. Item seven, is budget amendments?
We have one amendment this month to the Drug Fund Capital Budget. $10,000 to purchase equipment for the new helicopter from Hawkins County Sheriff's Office. Brings the budget to $48,326.50 for the Drug Fund Capital.
Move the approval, second.
A motion, the second, discussion, counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Consideration of invoices over $10,000.
So moved, second.
A motion, the second, discussion.
One quick question, Karen. On the payment of property taxes to Francis Hundley, I would think that they would be paying us, that us paying them? What's the, why are we paying them? Personal property taxes?
That's where their prizing, their praisers go out.
Okay, so we're reimbursing it for the praiser workers. They handle that for us now, okay. I thought we're paying, okay.
I agree with the councilman, that should be free. It's not...
I say it's not free.
Oh, man.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, I think, on the table. Any additional discussion? Counsel, please vote.
And the vote is unanimous.
And there being no further business, meeting is adjourned.